I'm Sydney and I'm the city liaison.
I'm Rochelle and I'm the neighborhood liaison.
And I'm Noella and I'm the marketing director. When approached with the task of redeveloping the Elmwood district, our company was insistent on providing the people of Elmwood with the infrastructure needed to support their promising future. It is a priority of ours to ensure that our walkable streets and inviting atmosphere bring convenience and comfort to all who call Elmwood and the greater city of Yorktown home. We will work diligently with the people, the true heart and soul of Elmwood, to improve district amenities and transform this area into a prosperous community, especially during this time of hardship. We have provided this proposal to show you the benefits of partnering with EGNI and hope that we can be your leader in revitalizing the Elmwood district. Let's rise together.
In building our site plan, EG and I wanted to bring the community closer together by combining residential office and retail spaces to create an attractive street scape. To minimize traffic congestion, parking entrances were spread out and given access to main roads, increasing efficiency for when these spaces are utilized for drive-through testing and food distribution. To encourage micro mobility, a district parking system will be implemented, as well as a bike share program, allowing shoppers to park in any of our lots and walk or bike between our retail locations. At the corner of Madison and Ninth, we have placed a supermarket so residents returning from the business district on the east side can easily turn right in.
This will fulfill the request by the Elmwood Neighborhood Alliance as they wanted to keep traffic out of the neighborhood. While still staying true to our vision and taking into consideration the importance of convenience to our kupuna, our elders, we believe that the supermarket will be just as practical with its nearby retail and provide fresh products as it will be more locally sourced and create that nice walkable street scape.
Additionally, investing in a local supermarket instead of a Qmart enables us to create more opportunities for local retailers since they won't have to compete with the big box conglomerate. As we wanted to promote local businesses, jobs, and the local economy, having a local supermarket is the best option that will conveniently meet the needs of Elmwood's diverse population and not undercut the profits of these neighborhood retailers. Similar to every great community, Elmwood's neighborhood retailers will not only play an extremely important role in the economic development of the district, but also contribute to the overall attractiveness, ambiance, and walkability of the streets.
By situating our retail along Ninth Avenue, we have created a central location that residents can gather and enjoy a wide variety of services. Keeping our retail on the avenue connecting the residential area to Madison Street, we increase the exposure these local businesses will have, while also giving residents the convenience of easily stopping in for a bite to eat on their way home from work. These shops will also see increased business on Sundays because of their proximity to the Grace Memorial Church. After service, families can walk down Victorian Road to our cafe or stop by York Dry Goods for some ice cream.
Our retail will be pre-leased as we have faith that the city will swing it back on its feet. The parking lots of our retail can provide outside seating for restaurants to offset that reduced capacity required by social distancing and include designated takeout and contactless pickup parking.
Since Elmwood's demographic is so diverse, we have provided housing at all price points ranging from luxury condominiums to affordable housing to meet the needs of this community. Staying true to our vision to provide for the needs of all of Elmwood's residents, our company's decision to include over 20% affordable residential units helped us provide housing options that people of all backgrounds can afford. These new buildings are more than just homes for the average resident. For everyone, from the district's first responders and schoolteachers to the business executives and even your favorite barista from one of our new coffee shops, these buildings are the places of comfort and security, a safe haven during these challenging times.
We chose to situate the homeless shelter next to the YMCA to isolate it from the majority of housing and keep the disturbance to the district at a minimum. We are acutely aware that choosing to put a homeless shelter in Elmwood is a controversial decision, but only as a community will Elmwood be able to rise. Elmwood is uniquely suited to provide the wraparound services that are necessary to help heal the homeless population of not just Elmwood, but Yorktown as a whole. The YMCA offers services including a 24-hour homelessness hotline, assistance with transitional housing, and events that help bridge the gap between the homeless population and concerned residents. There is also a state employment office nearby which can be utilized to help with rehabilitation. In addition to the resources already in place, EG and I developed Elmwood's community features to ensure the health, safety, and convenience of all its residents. This includes physical and mental health facilities, as well as office space allotted for nonprofit groups, including jobs and justice. These services help the homeless population, as well as give them a place to go during the day, keeping them off the streets. This shelter will address the homelessness problem and give the city a better way of managing the spread of COVID, helping the community rise together.
EG and I would like to be proactive and take responsibility for the homeless situation. Despite the concerns surrounding the homeless shelter, the Grace Memorial Church has been a pillar of Elmwood's community for many years and has earned the respects and trust of its residents. They were also able to fundraise enough money from the community to pay for and staff the newly-built shelter. We hope that the city council would share our belief that the best changes are those that are driven by the people. As you can see, the first five rows of the audience consist of members from the church, jobs and justice, and the YMCA, and their Ohana or family who are here with us today in support of our development decisions. With their support, EG and I look forward to helping heal and better the community as a whole. While keeping both York Dry Goods and Victorian Row and refurbishing it to a mixed-use space will bring convenience to the community, hitting one of our goals in our vision. In addition, the Neighborhood Alliance wanted to preserve these historical sites as a symbol to represent the former Elmwood. We decided to reinvent and honor Phoenix Hotel as a town square of the district with COVID guidelines in place.
Inside of York Dry Goods, we have included the university classrooms and community art space. The classrooms will temporarily be used for COVID-19 contact tracing, while our community art space will become a temporary food bank that helps the district become better equipped for the necessary relief to residents affected by the economic consequences of COVID-19.
Along with the services we have available for our homeless population, there are a variety of public and private amenities for the community to utilize and enjoy. Staying true to our vision, our public amenities such as our open park spaces, bike share program, and daycare center help provide for the needs of the district's residents. They were strategically included in our plan to not only support the residents of our six blocks, but those currently living in the multifamily homes bordering the redevelopment zone. These amenities also encourage sustainability and enhance the walkable environment that will make the district inviting to residents and visitors.
Taking everyone's request into consideration, we chose to create the public art space instead of the studio. However, we are interested in reaching out to these artists for the community to come and beautify our parking structures to create a desirable view, not only for the nearby residents, but also for those walking through our community. We have also decided to include a computer center to cater to our wide range of residents, from the kiki or children to our kupuna.
We have created 1,303 jobs tailored to the diverse cross-generational community that exists in the Elmwood district as there are both entry-level and skilled positions available. Additionally, our unique plan creates even more jobs that are not factored into the financial model program, such as parking attendants, sanitation crews, and commissioning our local artists to beautify the plane buildings and parking structures in our development.
EG and I's plan ensures financial success for the residents, the cities, and our investors through a higher rate of return, higher property values, and city revenue, while staying true to our vision of integrating contemporary, affordable, and market-rate housing. Our inclusive plan designates a plethora of community amenities for individuals in Elmwood and the greater city of Yorktown to enjoy. The addition of these amenities, which includes parks, green spaces on top of our townhouses, as well as a variety of neighborhood retail, increases the demand for both professional and residential properties in the Elmwood redevelopment district. This raises the value of those properties in the development and surrounding area, providing a higher tax base for the city, as well as an annual higher tax rate. The construction of desirable podium apartments and townhouses which integrate affordable and market-rate units reflect EG and I's commitment to creating a more connected Elmwood. Our plan truly acknowledges and encourages building and growing those interpersonal connections to help Elmwood rise to become a flourishing community. EG and I has not only stimulated the local economy in our plan, but we have also taken a great pride in ensuring that Elmwood will grow to be a prosperous district, both economically and socially. Especially in a foreign time of such great uncertainty and tension, our plan connects communities and businesses safely. EG and I's all-inclusive redevelopment plan acknowledges Elmwood's heritage while also revitalizing the cross-generational and business-centric community by enhancing Elmwood's livability and convenience. So, are you ready for the next step towards a more prosperous Elmwood? Thank you for your time today, and we hope you consider EG and I to be your leader to rejuvenate the Elmwood district. Let's rise together.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It was very well done. Thank you. I'm gonna start out with, I guess, a pretty small one question. I was focusing on the groups. And so I'm gonna ask the neighborhood liaison, how are you addressing the elderly population? What in your site plan and your development plan has addressed the elderly?
For the elderly, although they have requested for a Qmart, we believe that the supermarket will be just as convenient for them. And we decided to create that walkable street gate for them to be able to walk through the community, to be able to buy their essentials. We also have included a computer center, which we believe that they would use within our cross-generational community and be able to come together with the kiki and with the elderly.
I have one.
Also, in addition, the supermarket will also have early bird hours for the elderly to come by.
Okay, I have one more question for the financial analyst. What trade-offs were you looking at here when you were deciding on the different, you know, decisions you were making with regard to the Qmart and homeless shelter, et cetera, et cetera? How did you come about the plan that you did?
Well, when we were designing our plan for the redevelopment of Elmwood, one of our main priorities was keeping, was building up that sense of community and interacting in that cross-generational togetherness, which is why we really wanted to focus the heart of the Elmwood district, which is the people. And the homeless population is no exception to that. And what's unique about the Elmwood district is it has these different sorts of infrastructures that allows us to care for them. And believe it or not, financially, it's also a lot more safer. It's sort of a safer bet for the city because, say you have to move the homeless shelter to another part of Yorktown where it's not completely covered in cost by the church, you're gonna encounter the migration of those homeless people as well. You might have some of them which may not even leave our district because we have all these great values. You might have to be paying extra overtime for the police officers to have to monitor this. And when it came to the Qmart, we felt like a Qmart would just sort of drive out local businesses, which is not what we wanted to do. We wanted to build up the local economy, which meant us inspiring and advocating for local retail and local store owners.
Madeline or Vincent?
Thank you, John, and thank you, team, for your presentation. It was really well done. My question, I think, is for Noella, marketing director. As you know, COVID has brought to light a lot of the challenges that retail faces now. Brick-and-mortar retail, that is, right? Amazon and other e-commerce retailers are capturing a larger and larger portion of market share because folks don't want to go to stores. And I remember hearing in the introduction to this project that all of the retail will be pre-leased. So I just wanted to know what strategy you have in place to, you know, make sure that retailers who are in a really vulnerable position right now, you know, restaurants and salons, et cetera, how you can give them confidence that, you know, signing a 10-year lease here, you know, will be financially successful for them? And how you make this project competitive? So that was a long-winded question. Looking forward to hearing your answer.
That was actually a great question. And to answer that, it kind of really aligns with our vision statement, which is we want it to become a prosperous area with convenience, which is something that we will draw residents to. So with the residents will come consumers for those retailers. And we all know that COVID will eventually pass. So when we are expecting it to do so, we want Elmwood to become a prosperous district that a lot of the people within the district, but also the people within the major city of Yorktown, can come to and they can relax. So we're promising our retailers that they will have this sense of community and this group of people and this consumership base that will be willing to go through our walkable streets and that will be willing to come into this community and to purchase stuff at all of their stores and to eat at the restaurants. So that's what...
Thank you, Noella. So it sounds to me like you're saying because there are a lot of residents in this mixed-use and mixed-income community, there's demand basically built in for these retailers?
Yes, there is.
Great. And I'll just, if time allows, just a quick follow-up question. How is that thinking informed the retail tenants you are targeting in your kind of targeted tenant list? What kind of retailers were you looking for?
So something, another part of our vision statement was that we wanted Elmwood, our redevelopment plan, to be very convenient. So we wanted types of things that, like, people can just go to and get all in one place. So something that we have, we'd have like the essentials. So we have obviously our supermarket, but then we have some clothing stores for different price points. So we have our Goodwill. And then we have like higher-end boutiques for that fancy vintage shopping experience that some people desire. We also have coffee shops and we have business or restaurants that are gonna be easily accessible for everybody. We have the hardware store, which is something that draws people in because it is a very useful store to have, as well as an auto repair shop. That's very good for our community.
Vincent, do you have questions?
Yeah, this is questions for the site planner. I noticed here that you folks did not include the police substation nor the skate park. Can you talk a little bit about your team's discussion in terms of why those were not included? Or were there any conflicts related to the topics such as not including these?
Yeah, of course. That's a great question. We chose to not include the police substation in light of recent events regarding the Black Lives Matter movement. We feel that our country as a whole is looking towards a more inclusive future that focuses more on rehabilitation instead of punishment, which we support in how we're building up our new shelter, which has the different support systems, including the church, the YMCA, and our nonprofits, as well as the state employment office. So we feel that the police substation was not necessary as another to manage the shelter. And then I think I'll turn the question regarding the skate park over to our neighborhood liaison to address that group's letter.
Okay, hi. As for the skate park, tying back to our vision for convenience and for the whole community, we decided that the skaters could also use the park, sorry, the courts to come and practice their skateboarding. And we did look into adding a skate park within our site, but financially, it did not meet our numbers.
Instead, we decided to use the parks, which can be used by a wider variety of our citizens. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Madeline or Vincent? Any other questions?
Sure, sure. I have one more question, if that's all right.
Go ahead.
So this is to the city liaison. So one thing that COVID, a negative consequence of COVID, is that cities now are facing some pretty significant budgetary problems. And we have a lot of obligations to protect people's financial well-being and health, as we should. But just tell me how, so this is to the city liaison, the Elmwood project will, beyond providing tax revenue for the city, what are some of the other things that could be, you know, major benefits to us and help us make our job easier as your city council?
Yes, so with the budget, we were able to include things such as sanitation stations in highly-traffic areas and high-touch places, as well as on every floor of the new buildings that we have built. And so this is to help keep people mindful of their hand hygiene and also able to sanitize places that they'll be touching often, elevator buttons, railings. And then in addition to that, we have built, with keeping in mind these high-touch surfaces, and want to include automatic sliding doors and also build with high-efficient particle air filters to reduce airborne disease spread. Additionally, with all the amenities that we have included in the redevelopment zone, property values will rise and, like you said, generate more tax revenue, which the city can use in the future to continue to implement these services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, do we have more time or are we all done?
That's actually time, so I'm going to let Mr. Suzuki know. This room is closed. If council is ready to speak to the next team.
Thank you so much for your...
Thank you, Bert.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, everyone.
Welcome. Newt, my name is John Ko and I'm the city council head today. And I'm from the Washington DC area, as you may know. So I'm gonna introduce you to my fellow councilpeople. Go right ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Madeline Roberts. Pleased to be here today and thank you so much for your hard work. I'm looking forward to seeing it. And I'm calling in from the San Francisco Bay Area.
Hello, everyone. My name is Vincent Kimura. I'm calling in from Honolulu, Hawaii.
Thank you. And go right ahead. It's up to you now.
Good afternoon, city council. We are Newt developers or New Tomorrow developers. My name is Sophie Messenger and I'm the team city liaison.
I'm Rebecca Lewis and I'm the neighborhood liaison.
I'm Evan Song and I'm the financial planner.
I'm Bruno Chong. I'm the marketing director.
I'm Tintin Lee and I'm the site planner. Our vision is that Yorktown will be a community-focused, economically diverse area with an emphasis on sustainability and historic preservation. It will include a variety of job opportunities and activities that people of all ages can enjoy. By Ninth Avenue, we have placed the Qmart next to Yard Station, allowing the residents to have easy access.
Could I interrupt for just a moment and ask you to expand? Blow that up a little bit more, please, that screen? Please. Thank you.
Let me see if this will work.
I believe he means to zoom in.
Zoom in.
Is that good?
It's better.
To the entire document.
Zoom in, zoom in. I will, yes.
I think it's Ctrl+Shift+Plus.
Or just Ctrl+Plus, I think.
Yeah.
How it works.
It does not seem to be doing it for me.
If you click on the 100%, you'll be able to zoom in. Right below viewed insert.
Yeah, it's loading. My internet is not, oh, okay. Way too small.
That's better, but if you get full screen, that'd be perfect.
I don't think I can, is that large enough?
Should be, except it doesn't do the whole site plan. I think that's good. That's good, right there. Okay.
Should I start over?
No, just keep going.
Okay. By Ninth Avenue, we have placed the Qmart next to Yard Station, allowing the residents to have easy access. We imagined the area to be really active and filled with foot traffic. Walking from the Yard Station up north through Ninth Avenue, residents will be able to see beautifully painted murals by our local artists along the walls of Qmart. We've included a 30,000-square-feet park on Block Four, which can serve as a hub for people in the town to meet up and spend time outdoor. Residents can meet here and go to the services in York Dry Goods or shop at various stores which fly in the streets. Further up north will hold more residential-based places, such as university classrooms and teen centers in York Dry Goods. Tenth Avenue, pre and post-corona, will also be active and filled with foot traffic on weekends and weekdays due to it being filled with restaurants and businesses. During coronavirus, Tenth Avenue will be closed off to car traffic and the restaurants will have open outdoor seating, ensuring that the restaurants are supported. We have also built a new homeless shelter for the homeless and placed it relatively close to church, as well as the unemployment office, so the homeless population can look for work. Lastly, we have constructed new courts next to the YMCA to allow that area to be more active, especially during the coronavirus. We made sure that the parking lots did not line any streets and instead were concealed by buildings, so the town will look nice from the streets.
As a marketing director, I wanted to ensure that our vision for our development was feasible and achievable by allowing tenants, retailers, and workers to thrive. Our aim was to create a city accenting on community, economic diversity, environmental sustainability, and historic preservation. In order to make the residents of Yorktown feel more welcome and to bring them together, we created park spaces for them, viewing areas so they can celebrate together, amphitheaters, playgrounds, and sport courts, so they can be together, all the while encouraging outdoor activities. Furthermore, families, friends, and coworkers can gather, exercise, or enjoy a walk in the park. And now with our placement of retail, residents are able to buy something to eat after a long day of work and enjoy it in the multiple parks we have. Having retail near office buildings allows workers to go out during the day and to buy from those shops, restaurants, salons, and such. In addition, we placed office buildings near the yard, so workers have easy access to transportation and a way home. For teenagers and young people, we hope to see them use a large park space on Block Four to meet friends easily while still being close to home. From there, they have easy access to the shops where they can go with friends. We have a total of 19% affordable housing, thus accommodating and welcoming many different residents in this new community. Our market absorption rate never exceeded three years, so we are confident in the success of the newly-designed residences. We expect the new tenants in the townhomes and podium apartments to be young professionals and newer families with a mix of income levels. These tenants will love the retail available to them as they will want to go to shop and go out to coffee with friends. In addition, we prided ourselves on the sustainability of our design. 10% of all of our land is dedicated to park space. We market to environmentally friendly organizations and you won't need a car here because everything is accessible through walking or at most, public transportation.
Esteemed city council members, I'm Evan Song, the financial analyst of New Tomorrow Development. As the financial analyst, my role was to meet the financial objectives with investors and the city of Yorktown itself. Throughout the development process, I helped to achieve and maintain these numbers while still letting the plan adhere to my group members' plans and ideas. I was also tasked with balancing the distribution of affordable housing and the use allocation of buildings like York Dry Goods and the Phoenix Hotel in order to maintain profitability, while still leaving room for plenty of amenities and other benefits to the public. I tried to maximize job and housing opportunities as well, working to help those affected by the coronavirus crisis. All in all, my job is to keep the project fully within our budget. Now for the actual financial analysis. The only returns that are actually required are the developer profit of 12.5% over three years of development and the city profit of $1.25 million over 10 years. For our project, we achieved both objectives with a developer profit of 14.1% and a city profit of $1.826 million. Obviously, we fulfilled both objectives by a significant margin, with over 1.5% of our development profit requirement and almost exactly $600,000 over the city profit requirement. There was no requirement for affordable housing, but we included a full 19% overall affordable housing rate, which is huge, making Elmwood more accessible to mixed-income families, keeping the town accessible to families diversely impacted by the coronavirus. Similarly, while there is no required amount of job creation, we're still creating over 1,500 jobs through this project alone, which should coincide perfectly with the regrettable rise in unemployment due to COVID-19. And finally, 10% or 1/10th of the city is made up of parks in the town square, which give the community a safe space for a variety of activities, just like our vision statement explains. Thank you.
Throughout this project, we have tried to address the concerns of every neighborhood group so they will all happily support this development and feel included in this community, especially in this changing time. First, we placed the homeless shelter equidistant from the unemployment office and the church. This will alleviate concerns from the Elmwood Neighborhood Alliance. This way, the homeless shelter is away from their homes. And in addition, we provided a police station and a drug rehab center to combat the crime levels they are worried about. We also made sure to follow their wishes by preserving York Dry Goods and the Phoenix Hotel to create a historical feel. For the elderly communities, we made sure to include the Qmart so they can buy everything they need and also have a part-time job. The local artists will paint a mural on the side of the Qmart to beautify the community. In addition, we've put in many parks for the elderly to get outside. We're planning on implementing daily activities in the parks for all citizens, but there will be activities to specifically cater to the elderly's needs. For example, we are planning to have socially-distanced tai chi classes or bachi. This park on Block Four will act as a community hub and there will be art installations from local members of the community. This will allow people to leave their houses and connect as a community. We've also implemented 19% affordable housing, the computer center, the drug rehab center, and the Qmart, along with many other resources to meet almost every one of the jobs and justices' demands. To cater to low-income residents, the computer digital center will check out laptops so students and adults can work from home and participate in remote learning. The university classrooms will also become distribution centers for food, masks, and other necessities to help those who have been affected by COVID. The teen center will also be converted into a COVID testing center. We will ask the Qmart to donate materials for distribution. To help the restaurants in the area, we will close part of Tenth Avenue across from the restaurants to give them more outdoor seating options. In addition, as many residents live within walking distance of these restaurants, some of the parking lots behind them will also serve as outdoor seating. The teen center will also move outdoors. The people who normally will lead activities for the teens will continue to do this, but online or in person in the parks. Overall, we hope to create a strong sense of community for the residents.
Throughout this process, our team has paid close attention to the needs of the city and its potential residents. Although our plan calls for city funds towards building community hotspots, like libraries, parks, teen centers, and a daycare center, and funding city must-haves like a police station and affordable housing, our expected tax revenue of over $1.8 million meets your request in your RFP and provides promise to a well-developed... and provides promise to a well-developed and funded city. I would like to focus your attention to a goal that both City Council and Newt Developers have in common: economic constituent diversity. Especially during the current pandemic, we recognize that employment may be difficult, and we recognize and value workers in both entry-level and high-scale-level jobs. This is why our plan calls for a 19% affordable housing rate to support local firefighters, university teachers, and many other hard-working Yorktown residents. In designing our Yorktown vision, we aim to create a city that would thrive and last well into the future. However, we recognize that, given the current pandemic and the effects it will have on such a development, given the public health climate, we are certain that our high rate of affordable housing will help residents of all income levels and ultimately support a growing economy. We have supported long-term residents through our establishment of facilities that allow them to age in place, and we have created 1,591 jobs. Furthermore, we have met the city request for a 30,000-square-foot town square. This space will be filled with a socially-distanced seating area that nearby restaurants can use to their advantage, as well as an amphitheater and art installations. We also understand that retail will be restricted to 50% capacity due to the current pandemic, and we recognize the city's concerns about this. One way our plan hopes to support these businesses is by closing off a portion of Tenth Avenue to only foot traffic to allow residents to shop at a distance. Building a tight-knit community and a well-supported economy is in the best interest of the City Council and of the Newt Development Team. We hope that you will choose to build a new and better tomorrow with Newt Developers.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. It was very good. I appreciate it very much. I'll kick off the questioning. So Evan, talk to me a little bit about the trade-offs that you were making here to achieve the returns that you had. You've got a very adequate return, both to the city and to yourselves. Had you thought about maybe leaving a little bit more on the table to accommodate some of the neighborhood group needs?
So...
What thought process did you have there?
All right, so we were thinking about it. We tried a lot of different scenarios. We experimented a lot. We thought about increasing affordable housing, and we thought about trying a senior center or a junior offenders' center. But we tried both of those, or all three of those, and none of them seemed to work when we added the senior center. Our progress went below the line, and when we added a junior offender center, it also dropped to dangerous levels. Instead, we decided on giving it to the city. Hopefully, we hope that the money we give to the city acts as a sort of safe net, a safety net in terms of the troubling times that we're experiencing. It's better to have a backup to help deal with a crisis in case something goes wrong with the city and unforeseen circumstances come up. We hope that you will use it to deal with if nothing comes up. We're hoping that you could use it to invest in medical supplies or other things to help with the COVID-19.
Thank you. Madeline or Vincent?
Sure. Marketing Director, can you tell me a little bit about how you are going to sell retailers on leasing space on that 10th and Jefferson Street retail corner or the space on Ninth Avenue and Jefferson Street? They just seem a little isolated, but maybe that's just my interpretation of it, but tell me the vision.
Right, so the idea for 10th Avenue and Jefferson Street was that you go with your family, you grab a bite to eat, and you go to the parks. And you can also notice that they are well within reach of residences. So it's not like a far walk... It's not very far off. You can grab something to eat. Maybe after work, you're a bit hungry. You get a snack, some ice cream, and you go to the parks.
Vincent?
Thank you.
This question's for the Neighborhood Liaison as well as the Site Planner. If either one want to take... It's actually two-part questions, so I'll ask the first one first. In looking at the letters from the different constituents here and the commentary, especially around supporting our elderly population here, I'm noticing that in your community facilities breakdown, you did not include a community art space nor a art studio or a senior center. Could you maybe discuss some of the internal conflicts or discussions around that?
So we wanted to make sure that everyone felt as though they had a place in the community to express themselves and what they wanted. And so although we didn't include the artist space, we would like to have a mural on the sides of the Q Mart that which can allow the local artists to come and paint and create their art. And also, in the parks, we have local art installations, which not only would be happening during COVID, we would also like that to continue throughout regular life as a place for the local artists to show off their work to members of the community. But we did discuss putting it in, and we tested it in York Dry Goods. And then, in terms of the senior center, as Evan mentioned earlier, I believe, we did also try putting that in, but we ultimately decided against it and rather to compensate for that through programs, which would likely happen in the parks where the elderly could do similar things to the senior center, but also outdoors, which in a way, I personally think is kind of better because they are also getting fresh air that way, which otherwise they wouldn't have gotten.
Okay, Mike, thank you. My follow-up question is regarding the skate park. Can maybe the Neighborhood or the Site Planner or someone else talk about the decision to not include a skate park?
So we chose not to include the skate park because it was mostly teenagers, and I believe it was about 14 or so total who wanted it, which in the whole grand scheme of things is kind of on the smaller side. But we figured that they would... There are other places for them to skate, like they can skate on the sidewalks. And sometimes when the courts aren't open, that's a flat area which they could use to move around because there are going to be spaces on the courts which aren't in use sometimes, which they could also come and use if they needed to.
And to add along with that, because the group is mostly made up of teenagers, we also believe that at that age, we also have the courts active for them if they would like to go on the courts, like Rebecca said. And we have the shops within the retail departments. So as a teenager ourselves, we believe that at this age, even though we don't have a skate park designated for them, we do have other areas and other options for them to go. We also have a teen center, which currently, because of COVID-19, is used for a testing center. However, once life gets back to normal, it will be another area that they can also go instead of building a skate park directly for them.
Thank you.
Sophie, could you expand a little bit on the COVID-19 issues that you've addressed here for the city? Some of the things that you've done. Thank you.
Of course. So we've done quite a few steps. First off, I think we should talk about York Dry Goods and what we have done with the facilities within that. While we recognize that under COVID-19, university classrooms will likely be closed and classes will be held online, we have decided to use that open space to provide the city with masks. It is a mask distribution site, as well as, for the less fortunate, a food distribution site. Furthermore, within York Dry Goods is our teen center, which we hope to expand out into that 30,000-square-foot park and instead use the teen space during COVID to test for COVID, so that we are making sure that our city is as safe as possible. Furthermore, we have on Tenth Avenue... This is probably one of the biggest decisions that our group was trying to make. We decided to shut down Tenth Avenue, probably mostly on just weekends, to cars. So no cars will not be able to go on that portion of Tenth Avenue to allow for that retail area and for those courts and those offices that are mostly doctors' offices and therapy offices to be used to their full potential. We would let the retail in the area expand their outdoor seating onto the street and allow for general health of the community to go up by encouraging them to walk to the retail in that area. Our establishment of the parks, of the 30,000-square-foot park, has really helped. We've added a viewing area to that park and an amphitheater so that concerts can be held there, as well as socially-distanced seating. And with our decision to put in courts, especially during this time, we recognize that some of the only sports that can be played are socially distant, are tennis or badminton or anything like that. So we decided to put in the courts to give a direct access to exercise for our residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madeline, Vincent, any more questions?
I have a question. When you think about, you know, let's just say I'm a... Obviously, this is my area, and I want to visualize the vision that Newt has, and without any imagery, etc. Can you... Can maybe the Site Planner or someone else walk me through what to expect when I exit the Yard Station? Walk me through the kind of experience, the sights, the sounds, the visuals?
So leaving the Yard Station by the Q Mart, you will walk down up north Ninth Avenue, and by your right, there will be the glass buildings of offices, and by the left, there will be the beautifully painted murals by our local artists on the walls of the Q Mart. And continue walking up north, there will be what used to be the Phoenix Hotel, now filled with office space as well as retails. And on your left, there will be more retail stores, and it will just be overall a vibrant and active area. Heading up even more north towards the church, we have parks on the right filled with the amphitheater, the programs for the elderly. And on your left, there will be the York Dry Goods with the different retail shops that we have there, as well as the university and teen center that has been repurposed for COVID-19 purposes and usage. And turned by Adams Street towards the church, we have a row of townhouses and podiums to the right. Podiums to the right, left, will be townhouses. And when you continue walking down or walking down Adams Street and heading towards the corner between Adams Street and Tenth Avenue, and heading into Tenth Avenue, you will meet another relatively active area with the retail on your right, if you're facing, like, walking into Tenth Avenue. And on your left will be office buildings. This is like the area where the Q Mart, the retail, and the buildings, the office buildings were on Ninth Avenue. Tenth Avenue has a smaller version, but also actively vibrant version with the restaurants and stores that we have incorporated there. Along with the... Right next to the YMCA, we have the court that will also be active with anyone who wants to play tennis or badminton. And if you continue heading or if you turn on the corner of where a low-rise 1B building would be, you will see our new shelter also close to the YMCA. That is about a relative vision walkthrough of our city.
Well, thank you for your presentation, Newt, the group, and we appreciate it. It was very well done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Good job.
I'm honored you're doing it.
Thank you for your time. Oh, should I stop, Cher?
Okay, Newt, you will be moved from this room momentarily, so just hang tight.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. We're the Quartz Real Estate Group, and we're very excited to be here. My name is Daniel Esther. I'm the Site Planner.
My name is Matias, and I'm the Financial Analyst.
My name is Sydney. I'm the Neighborhood Liaison.
My name is Sadie. I'm the Marketing Director.
My name's Emma, and I'm the City Liaison.
And at Quartz Real Estate, our vision is flexible redevelopment defined by and for community that feels as familiar as it is alive. Starting with our large park, our town square, located on the corner of Block 1, we've designed this to be our large community space to host biannual arts festivals, weekly farmers' markets, live music in the evening, you know, after COVID when it's appropriate, and generally to serve and engage the community. We've located the retail on Block 1 next to the park to make sure that they have access to outdoor seating so that they can continue to serve patrons during the pandemic. We also have this parking lot located behind the retail to serve as a very flexible space for the city to use. As you can see, we intend to include beautifying elements like trees in all our parking lots in Elmwood, and we intend for this to serve as a drive-through, walk-through, or bike-through COVID-testing center to serve the Elmwood community. Next slide. The center of our town is our pedestrian downtown called the Four Corners District at the corner of Ninth and Jefferson. We have all our community facilities in the York Dry Goods building. And these familiar buildings, the York Dry Goods and the Phoenix Hotel, really anchor the spirit of our town. We also have pedestrian retail at the bottom of the York Dry Goods building, as well as the Phoenix Hotel. And those combined with the retail located behind the park to create a positive retail, a positive and central retail environment where all our shoppers can go and shop and spend time in the park and enjoy Elmwood. Finally, next slide, please. We've decided to move the homeless shelter next to the YMCA so that they do not have to transit to downtown to access those resources that the YMCA has a long tradition of providing. And we decided to go with a supermarket instead of a Q Mart in order to support those community businesses that we so value in Elmwood. I'd like to pass it along to Matias now. Thank you. All right, so our development of Elmwood will be an attractive investment, both for investors and for the city. It focuses on creating community and making sure that we are investing in that very community. We are emphasizing affordable housing and community services, and we have 61 units of affordable housing, making up 21% of our 284 units of total housing. Additionally, we included many affordable community services in the York Dry Goods building. And when it comes to our numbers, our investors will be making 13.5% revenue, and the city will be earning $1.306 million from the development over 10 years. While these numbers may be lower, we believe that it is incredibly pertinent to invest in our residents and to make sure that we have affordable housing and community services. And these issues have only been brought more to the forefront through the Black Lives Matter protests and the issues of income disparity brought up by the COVID pandemic. Additionally, we believe that our development is somewhat lower risk than other developments because nothing takes longer than three years to absorb, making sure that buildings don't sit empty for too long. And additionally, by taking care of our community and investing in it, we make sure that our residents do move into Elmwood and that they bring with them the market for the goods and services that Elmwood provides. Thank you, and I will pass it on.
Sorry. As the Neighborhood Liaison, I'm going to talk to you about how we exceeded the demands of Elmwood residents. We have included portable skate ramps that can go in parks for the skate-on skateboard group. We have also, with the affordable housing we have, the artists should be able to afford rent, which was the reason they wanted rent-free artist studios. And we will be also hosting biannual art festivals to celebrate the arts and generate local business for our local artists in the park. We have included the homeless shelter because of the generous offer from the Grace Memorial Church to pay for its construction costs and to staff it. Along with the homeless shelter, our 21% affordable housing and the 370 entry-level jobs we bring in were the most pressing concerns from jobs injustice. Were the most pressing concerns from jobs injustice. And as an organization committed to equity and access to resources. We have also put the library and the computer digital center in a position to distribute books, computers, and wifi. To um people in Elmwood during the pandemic who would not otherwise have access, which jobs injustice will be happy with. Um, with the affordable housing we have, we are confident the senior citizens of Elmwood will be able to age in place for those living on fixed incomes. We have also put in centralized retail in and around the Four Corners District. Um, and with the entry-level jobs, the senior citizens will have access to jobs should they choose to get one. And those two were the reasons that the old urbanists wanted a Q Mart, so we have met their requests regards to why they wanted a Q Mart. Um, moving on to the Elmwood Neighborhood Alliance, we did not include include a Q Mart per their request. And we have included lots of parks, community facilities, and neighborhood retail to restore Elmwood to what it to the charming neighborhood it once was. We have preserved the York Dry Goods and Phoenix Hotel historical buildings. And we have moved the homeless shelter away from Washington Avenue. Um, since we do acknowledge that the Elmwood Neighborhood Alliance was against having a homeless shelter. I will now pass it on to our marketing director. Thank you.
Okay, I want to take a chance to highlight some businesses and aspects of our plan that play into our vision for a community-focused neighborhood. And so the first part of this is our Four Corners District, as some of my teammates mentioned. Which is a place for retail, community services, and parks. And the retail social is essentially located along our main parks so that. People would encourage to visit their local restaurants and then have socially distanced picnics in the park. We've also grouped our labs and healthcare offices on block four so that people have a place to go to whenever they need these types of facilities. And also, we believe that these buildings will be needed regardless of whether it's a pandemic or not. And so I'm putting the important buildings on a busy street and then our probably more empty. Um, offices that are not going to be visited due to the pandemic and people staying at home along a less busy street. We've also included a mixture of nonprofit and for-profit companies along block five, which can be used by the homeless shelter and our older residents to get the services they need. Our plan also tries to address the pandemic that we are currently in by creating a plan that is flexible from COVID to non-COVID times. We have built a neighborhood that can last beyond the pandemic by having retail that borders the park, which will create a community. That uses their facilities that will continue and this trend will continue past the pandemic. We also have a mix of public and private partnerships that benefit the community and create opportunities for small to mid-sized businesses. This includes mass production in the York Dry Goods Building, which is a public facility but has a private company within it that's serving a purpose for the entire group. We also have part of our biennial festival for arts being partnered with the Con Community Art Studio to create a space for local artists to showcase. And sell their creations, and I'll move on to our city liaison. Okay, so I'm going to now highlight our plan's appeal to the city. So to start with the homeless shelter, taking advantage of Grace Memorial Church's offer. To build it um is advantageous since it saves the city from having to organize its own construction project. Furthermore, the homeless shelter protects a vulnerable sector of the population. Um, in order to support the shelter, we partnered with two private organizations, the Helping Hands Advocacy and Outreach Group and Homes for All Association. Two nonprofits that are placed next to the homeless shelter. So in addition to providing living space for the homeless, we also provided sixty-one affordable housing units. As mentioned by the financial analyst, in order to serve a diverse socioeconomic group. So this all adheres to the goal of mixed income development that is presented by the RFP. So to further meet this goal, we created many jobs. We created three hundred and seventy entry-level jobs, nine hundred and ninety um office jobs, and also sixty-one community facility jobs. Um, so along with financial diversity and support, we recognize that it's equally important to provide social support for the community, especially during this distressing time. So for this reason, we created created community um spaces such as a library and a daycare center. Also, we know that older residents are heavily impacted by the pandemic, so we provided a nonprofit organization. Named Senior Assistance, an organization that would provide services for the elderly, such as bringing food to their homes or serving as a hotline during the pandemic. Um, to further enhance older residents' ability to rage, mm, to age in place, sorry. Um, we also built a senior center that for the time being would serve as a food distribution center, but post-pandemic. It would return to being a senior center and enhance um the older residents' experience. We also recognize that outdoor spaces are vital to keeping the community healthy, so we provided three thirty-five thousand square feet of parks. Um, we will draw circles of six feet around the parks in certain areas to give people guidance on social distancing and will also have mass dispensers throughout the park. Um, also, we designed Ninth Street um so that it could facilitate a street closure. And if you have questions about that, I'd be happy to elaborate during the Q and A. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. We appreciate it. Uh, let me uh start off here. I'm going to ask the site planner to give me a perspective as you as you're a commuter to the to the to the yard station. As you come off, what is your vision as you're walking down the streets and, you know, what 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 do you look at when you come come off the yard? And the perspective that you have there?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, Matias, if you could switch to the last slide. Um, what we envision is this surface parking area to be a very flexible um space. So we've designed the retail on that corner to be um commuter and office worker friendly. Um, the office workers will park in their buildings designated parking. Um, commuters will have access to that like quick grab-and-go retail. I think they have like the Greek zone. Um, and the um like a donut shop and other commuter-friendly um spaces. And so it with that in mind, there's not going to be huge demand for surface parking. Um, and so we've tried to create that space so the retailers, um, we've tried, excuse me, we tried to create that space to be flexible so that retailers. Um, can possibly use it for outdoor seating as you see pictured. That's a picture of downtown Berkeley. Um, right next to the Bart Station. You can see it in the background. Um, and so that's those are our intentions. So when you walk out of the yard station, you're greeted with these um commuter-friendly retail um stores. And we are also intending to create like to include trees and other beautifying elements in all our parking lots. And so it should be a very pleasant exit. You are greeted by trees, retail, and outdoor seating.
Thank you. So financial planner, can you talk to me a little bit about some of the challenges that you had and to try to achieve the returns that you. Uh, you got and what were the trade-offs that were being made?
Give me one second. I need to close my door. My dog is going crazy.
Um, he's he's trying to answer your question for you, I understand.
Okay, so it was difficult for us to achieve the return that we wanted because we were really focused. On increasing community services and on making sure that there was affordable housing. And the main roadblock we faced was getting sufficient city revenue because a lot of the. Um, uses that we wanted were heavily city subsidized. So, but we think that we were able to get quite a significant amount of community services and affordable housing. And still meet the city's um, the city's requirement. And while we are quite close to the minimum, we think this is okay because the city seems to have. You guys seem to have indicated that you want us to spend city money on these uses. Um, by lowering the requirement and allowing us to have so many so much affordable housing and so many community services.
Thank you. Madeline?
Sure, my question is for the marketing director and it kind of uh segues off John's last question about returns. So every project has risks, right? And marketing director, your job is to turn this vision into reality and make sure that you get the tenants, that you get the condo buyers. That you get the retailers, etcetera, to come here. So what block or what part of the project, you know, would kind of keep you up at night as being one of the more risky? Parts of the project to get leased up or to get, you know, to make it really work as envisioned. I'm curious what what risks you see in the the uh community design?
I think the two risks that I see are the condos on block four because that is a very high-end luxury apartment. But it's in a very downtown area that overlooks the York Dry Goods Building. I feel like that maybe less beautiful area is offset by the central location that they have. The people in condos, they're paying for the access to the parks, the access to the high-end retail and the restaurants that we provided. And so it feels like even though that one area might not um be the most beautiful, I mean, the most. Um, like advantageous area for people who are paying for this high-end luxury, it's offset by those gains. And the other section um that at first I was worried about, but now like I see advantage of it, is the podium apartments on block two. Which most of them overlook a parking area and offices. However, they're also directly across Ninth Avenue from the parks and retail. And podium apartments are for younger people who are looking for jobs and are looking for their, maybe not their first apartment, but definitely. They're living on their own and they don't need a lot of space. And so it seems like what that area has is a really great location to yard stations and possible jobs. For the lower and less um impressive or less large families. So those are my two spaces.
Okay, thank you. Good luck with those.
This question's for the neighborhood liaison. Um, in looking at the the letters that you received from both the skate-on group as well as the pro arts. And the emphasis on supporting the artist community, etcetera. Can you talk to me a little bit about kind of the decisions that you and your team made and the exclusion of a community art space? Or a art studios or others, besides the fact that you mentioned already that you're going to be doing some artist murals externally, but. Can you talk to me a little bit more about the conversation in that regard?
Sorry, can you repeat that last part? I missed it.
Yeah, so so you received letters from um a number of groups, the the skater community as well as the artist community. And when you look at your breakdown of your facilities. Um, talk to me or can I explain a little bit about the conversation internally within the group about how you you uh made the decision to not include those components?
Yeah, so we originally did have a skate park. Um, but we got rid of it to have another podium, which um allowed us to have more affordable housing and we thought that was a very important issue.
And then you felt that the the on-ramp or skater ramps was the happy medium?
Art spaces. Um, and then also the main reason the artists wanted art studios was because. Afford the.
Sydney, you're losing your audio.
And then the um, the biannual art festivals will help generate business for them.
Out there a little bit.
Oh, sorry. Should I just repeat it all?
Or at least the end bit.
Yeah, repeated, repeated.
Okay, um, so we do have, we took out the skate park. In favor of a podium apartment to have more affordable housing, which we deemed as a more pressing issue, especially during this time where a lot of people. Are seeing wages cut back, hours cut back, and just being unemployed. Um, but there are portable skate ramps that can be placed in our large park. And the they aren't, there are no artist studios, but with twenty-one percent affordable housing, they should be able to afford rent, which was the main reason they wanted artist studios. And we will also have those art festivals biannually to celebrate the arts and feature local artists, um, which will help generate business for them. And the university classrooms will also likely hold art spaces that will um celebrate the arts too and encourage participation in the arts.
Great, thank you. Um, my next question is for the city liaison. Um, so in looking at one of the support groups which wrote a letter to you about the uh bike share. Can you talk a little bit about uh your role as well as your team's discussion about excluding the bike share?
Yes, of course. Um, so we initially thought that it could benefit us to include the bike share. But then when we started thinking about um. The pandemic and the state we are in and the fact that streets can be less busy and. Um, Ninth Street, as I talked about, we could be closed off. We decided that we wanted to make it a very pedestrian-friendly area. And another thing that we considered um while building this site plan is that actually walking every day is something that has been known. To boost people's immune system, and I wrote about this at the end of our packet and it's a study cited by Harvard Health. That about twenty minutes of walking a day can make men and women forty-three percent less likely to get sick.
Uh, if we have, if we have time, I'll have I have one more question uh for the financial analyst. And it's the last page of your presentation, your sensitivity analysis. Can you walk us through that for a minute or so as to what your rationale was and what?
Yeah.
Get to there?
That was just to look at the differences between if we um changed certain um aspects of our um uh site site plan. And the only um pieces, things that had significant improvements to revenue. Um, the city revenue was increased with the Q Mart, but again, we um due to the neighborhood groups and the vision of. Community and the vision within our site uh our our site, we thought the Q Mart was not a feasible option. Um, and it also had us losing affordable housing. Um, we lot would have lost ten units. Um, and then also reducing affordable housing would have improved revenue, but again, that was a big focus. Um, but generally, it was just to look at to see if we had done this differently, what, how would it have been different? And mostly either the changes were very small or they were, it was worse um for the city or the investors.
Thank you very much.
Is there time for one more question or are we out of time?
We are at time, city council members.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We really appreciate it. Everyone, very nice.
Make sure to walk twenty minutes today, everyone. Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, this looks good.
Everybody is here, okay. Well, thank you very much for each of your team's presentations today. We really appreciate it. You did an outstanding job, each one of you did. And uh what we're going to do um is my fellow council members and I are going to talk about each team separately. And uh we were told that the winners of each of each round, this round will be announced subsequently. So all we're going to do at this point is give you feedback on uh each of your presentations. So um we decided that uh we're going to go in order of how you presented. And so uh Mad Madeline is going to give the report on EGI.
Thank you, council member co, and thank you again, EGI team, EG and I. Um, you guys did a phenomenal job and thank you for kicking off um what was three really engaging presentations. Um, you certainly got off to a great start. So EG and I, right off the bat, I would say your presentation quality and the visuals and the vision statement were very, very strong. I was really impressed by that. I'd say it's, you know, the almost professional level, if not the professional level. The vision statement about the rising from the ashes, the importance of prosperity, and I just thought that that was really well articulated. Um, and it really came through in how you presented the um your development. Um, I would also say that I could really imagine myself walking through the development just with all of the visuals you included. Um, it was really well thought out. I was particularly impressed with kind of that public art commitment. Um, how much you detailed kind of the public health measures you would undertake to make sure this is a safe and inclusive community. I thought that was very well researched. Um, I thought it was interesting, you you really reasoned out why you chose not to include a police substation and I thought that that was a really. Um, compelling decision that you made and certainly relevant to today. Um, and your list of retailers, marketing director, I thought the retailers you're curated were was very thoughtful. I noticed you included a hardware store, for instance, and an auto repair store, um, and a grocery store. So all in all, I thought that the community was really well thought out. Um, I would say going forward, something to maybe further as you kind of advance this plan is think about. Your rate of return and think about ways to make sure that you have a little bit more of a buffer above that. and think about ways to make sure that you have a little bit more of a buffer above that required rate of return. And then think about the returns to the city as well and kind of find ways that perhaps you could generate some more tax revenues for the cities. But all in all, I think that this was a really well done, so thank you very much for your work, EGNI.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Newt, thank you again so much for your time and proposal. We thought it was very well done. We really liked, in particular, well, your, your team did a great job. In particular, we really wanted to give a couple kudos to the financial analysts, analysts and the marketing folks. You did an outstanding job of kind of talking us through this. Your, your numbers are, are good, and, you know, we really appreciated that you had the rate of return as well as, you know, the jobs component. I think that was by far the highest of the other two groups. Let's see. Other, we liked the breakdown of how you're planning the community facilities. You included a lot. You had a nice kind of a balance between both, a lot of your different constituents, both on the younger side as well as on the senior side. We really appreciated the breakdown, especially on the types of, you know, businesses that are going to be involved in some of the different retail spots too. That was really great. The one thing that we'd like to see more of, especially when you come back and refine this, is more the visual side. I think the look and feel, the experiential, in terms of, you know, when a resident or when myself and my, or other council members are walking around this new community. That was one thing that we, we needed to see, more of the, the sights and sounds part of it. But overall, you did a really great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, Quartz, very good presentation. That was excellent. I will have to give real kudos to the site planner, particularly because of the visuals with each block. I thought that was outstanding. You did a really nice job with that. Being able to highlight the vision statement along with the visuals co-terminously, I thought that was very well done. Gave us a very, an interesting perspective of what it's going to look like and feel like as, as you walk through the community. So we enjoyed that very much. The economic returns were certainly adequate. The contribute contribution and the argument that you made with regard to the low amount of contribution to the community with the offsetting it with the various community group needs, I thought was well done and, and it made sense. It, it did cover it, and so we appreciate that. Your affordable housing ratio was as high as any, and it was very good, and we appreciate that, accommodating that community. Of course, the homeless shelter being there was good and the, uh, your, your layout of the, uh, of the, of the site with the parks view and the walk, walkable up Ninth Street from the yacht, I thought was really well thought out, as well as the site plan next to the yacht with the spacing for the parking. And that was a good explanation that was made there. So it was a really interesting, well-done presentation, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ashley. Ashley, what's next?
Yes, so I am letting them know that we are done with the feedback session here, and everyone hang tight. They'll be slowly moving you back into the main room where the winning teams from each council will be.